Good evening. It's 7 o'clock. We'll get started. Let's all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome to the Bloomfield Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for July the 9th, 2024. As a brief introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member, quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to Circuit Court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. Comments by the Neighborhood Association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but those comments are not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine comments to the specific request before the board. For requests to be successful tonight, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. We hope this provides a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. Thank you. So, let's take attendance.
So noted.
And I would need a motion either to approve or amend the minutes for the June 18th, 2024 meeting.
I'd move to approve the June 18th, 2024 minutes. Support?
I have a motion and support. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. So, we'll now call the first item, 340 Hupcross. Is the applicant ready? So, could you come to the microphone, please, and give us your name and address and why you need a variance?
Hello. I'm here on behalf of Gotham and Jennifer Nakra.
So, your name is?
I am Stefan Akers, and on their behalf of 340 Hupcross, and we're seeking approval for a second-story addition above the existing two-car garage and front porch encroaching nine feet into the required 40 feet front yard setback and expanding an existing non-conforming structure. Basically, and this is the letter, the narrative that was written by the owner, "To whom it may concern, my wife and I are purchasing a home in Bloomfield Village for our growing family." The house we purchased-
So, we've got that. So-
You've got that? Okay.
Is there anything else you'd like to add then about the request?
Not at all. Just, I appreciate your approval.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I just want to clarify that what you're adding is over the existing footprint, correct?
Yes. Yes, we're not expanding. We're just over the existing footprint, and we're also under height requirements as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? So, I'll open this to the public for comment.
Hi, Kathy Weisenborn, representing Bloomfield Village. This is an expansion of the porch over the existing plate and over the garage. Our board reviewed this in May, found it does comply with our guidelines, is harmonious with the neighborhood, no expansion in the footprint, and you're just expanding a non-conforming structure. So, we do recommend your approval of the variances for the nine feet on the front setbacks.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? So, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for motion or discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion if there's no discussion.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. So, with regard to the appeal at 340 Hupcross Road for the setback variance, the dimensional variance required for the proposed second-story addition encroaching nine feet into the required 40-foot front yard setback and expanding an existing non-conforming structure, I move that this variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the fact that this is a corner lot. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason that this is consistent with other homes in the area. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given that it has multiple frontages. It's an existing floor plan also, and this is not self-created since the home is already in existence. So, if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The request is granted. Calling item two, 1-333-NORTHGLANGARY. Is the applicant here? So, if you come to the podium, state your name and address and why you need a variance.
My name is Brett Tripp. I'm with Coastal Pools. I'm representing the pool builder and the homeowner.
Okay.
The request for the variance is basically they're putting in a soak pool, and it's like a kit, and it requires it to be raised above nine inches of upgrade. I believe we have it at 12 inches of upgrade.
Kathy, I have a question on this one.
Sure.
There's a lot of discussion in the submittal about the height, but this is just notice as a permission request for the spa. Is that correct?
That's correct, because 18 inches is above grade, but then there's depth below.
So, we don't need a variance for the height?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? So, I'll open this to the public for comment. Anyone who'd like to comment on this item? Kathy?
Our board did review this request in April. We approved the pool as well as a required fence with the requirement that the fence be screened from street and neighbor view. We do recommend approval of the request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for a motion or discussion.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion?
Great.
In regard to the appeal at 1333 NORTHGLANGARY for the pool structure, accessory structure, I move the request be approved and submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the accessory structure is behind the house, it's within setbacks, it's not too high, and it will have a fence around it. If approved, the application for necessary permits must be made within one year. For a spot, all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen screen plantings should be required to screen the spot from public view 12 months out of the year.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Calling item number three, 75 NORTHBIRKSHURE. Is the applicant ready?
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Kuqua. I'm the owner of Blue Hawaiian Pools, and I'm representing the company that's building the project and also the homeowners, Ale and Ramana Shanjan. And this is a request to build a pool and a spa in a corner lot, which is technically their backyard, but because it's a corner lot, they may not have a backyard, so.
So, could you sort of explain a bit more detail the screening that's going to be provided, the height and the type of-
Yes. So, they're going to be seven to eight-foot tall Norway spruces on the roadside to block all coverage for the house. And then on the backside, they're going to be four to six-foot burning bushes covering the backside.
Any other questions from the board?
So, I guess my only question is, when they're planted, at the time of planting, will they conceal the accessory structures?
Yes. The way that we'll plant them is that the whole side will be completely blocked from view.
All right.
Yes.
What about the back of it? Is that visible from the road?
It comes around a curve, so the burning bushes will cover the entire backside as well.
Even in the wintertime? Because don't they lose their leaves?
I think they do.
I'm pretty sure the ones that are along the side will cover any of the neighbors that would be able to see the pool. Because it comes around on that curve, I don't think because there's trees and other stuff that's behind that backside.
Because the idea is that even in the winter, when a deciduous tree is going to lose its leaves-
Yes.
Typically, we would want screening 12 months out of the year. So, we would- So, spruces are great because they're evergreen, but the burning bush is going to lose its leaves in the winter.
Okay. Well, we can switch that out with the same Norway spruces, the seven to eight-foot Norway spruces on the backside.
Seven to eight?
Yep, seven to eight-foot tall.
Okay. I mean, yeah, the requirement would be 12 months out of the year. So, you could choose whatever species you wanted. It would just have to be something evergreen.
Okay.
Any other questions? So, I'll open this to the public for comment. Anyone here this evening who'd like to comment on this item? I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for motion or discussion.
I'll make a motion in regard to the appeal at 75 NORTHBIRKSHURE ROAD for, well, I'll do the variance first, for the dimensional variance for the proposed pool and spa fence located. I move that it be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards of practical difficulty because of the shape of the lot and the curving dual frontages or back, whatever you want to call it. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of their backyard not facing anyone except the street, and again, the unique circumstances of the property with the curving non-rear yard. I also make a motion to approve the permission request for the proposed spa. The applicant has demonstrated compliance with 42.7 standards because the size of the accessory structure is compatible with adjoining properties. Pools are very common in the area. Location will not hinder or discourage use of adjacent property, and because of the screening that we've just agreed to, will be hidden from view. Should this motion pass, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits obtained prior to construction.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion?
Do we need to add the evergreens to the motion?
Yes, it's part of the motion.
Yes, definitely.
It'll be evergreen.
Yeah, we'll do evergreens on that whole side. Yes.
Any other discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you so much.
So, calling item four, 718 Browning Court.
Good evening. My name is Jamie McAllier. I'm here with my husband, Matt McAllier, and we have two separate ZBA requests that we've made tonight, one for the patio and a separate request for the shed area. So, bullet number one and two I'll cover first. And the issue here is that we have, in the rear of our home, a pond that sits 26 feet from the house at its nearest point. So, we do have a walkout basement with two large sliding doors. So, making this a usable space is important for the flow and the aesthetics of the home. Recently, we removed the rear deck for two reasons. First of all, because it was old and falling apart, and there was also a very small portion that was in the 100-year floodplain. So, we've been playing flood insurance, and so we're trying to remove that from our expenses. So, our plan is to maintain the original setback of the deck that we just removed by building this paver patio. The drop from the main basement sliding door to the ground right now is six feet. So, in order to make this space usable, we need to build up this space. The plan does encroach 12.5 inches into the 25-foot natural setback ordinance. However, we feel that the compliance with the ordinance would be burdensome because of the topography and how the slope of the land. So, also, in order to make this patio plan work, the slope of the property requires a two-tier retaining wall with three-foot-high walls, which are in specifications with the ordinance. Since we are limited on space, we do not have the ability to make eight-foot-wide landings. So, we will have one eight-foot line of landing, and the second one will be three feet, which will essentially be planting boxwoods in the area, and that will help the slope of the topography come down naturally. We've spoken to our neighbors. We do not have a homeowners association. We've also been in touch with Eagle as well as Angela in Engineering and Environmental Services because we are dealing with the pond area. Do you want me to continue with the second piece?
Sure, please.
Okay. So, this one's a quick one. Second request is for a garden shed on the northern side of the property. This is not in close proximity to the pond. There is about a distance of 20 feet from the lot line, which means the 16-foot required yard setback, and because the land is on a slope, we will need to erect a 30-foot-long landscape wall that meets the requirements of the township.
Any questions from the board?
So, Patty, for the dimensional variance, that's just for the deck in the back. There's no variance for the garden wall in the front?
That's correct.
Okay.
And what about the shed?
What about the landscape wall, though?
There's a variance for not being able to meet the eight-foot separation for the retaining walls. There is also a variance for the shed, the shed located in the northerly side yard-
Yes.
And the landscape wall. So, they're in a side yard.
And I think we have a picture as well.
And she did take away the variance, you're right, for the setback, which is why it's X-ed out on the PowerPoint.
Okay. My only other question, because I'm guessing this is the first time you're here. The board knows. I typically always have an issue whenever we're going into the natural features because part of why we have the ordinance is so that we can protect these sensitive areas. My question is, you're encroaching a 14 feet. That's replacing what was already- So, what was already there was already encroaching 14 feet?
Yes, that is correct. We're essentially replacing the same footprint.
Okay, thank you. It's close.
But wasn't that encroachment different? It was posts, right? So, you had a deck that was extending out that was held up by posts?
There's a picture of it right there.
Yeah. So, that encroachment wasn't a solid surface?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions from the boards? So, I'll open this to the public. Anyone who'd like to comment on this item? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion or motion.
So, just one other thing I will say to the note, to the point that the chair just made. Because part of the concern, especially when you have like a paver, is that then it can run off into the pond versus the grass underneath, which would have been there originally, is going to absorb, you know, anything before falling off. So, okay.
I do have a response to that, which I spoke to our builder. And so, I'm not an expert on this, but this is what he said, is the base will be three-quarter clear limestone with GeoGrid every one foot high going 12 feet deep into the patio. We're also going to have weeping holes every four feet for drainage to keep the wall intact, and the base of the wall will be 12 inches deep. So, we are taking extra precautions in order to make sure that the wall, I want the wall to stay, obviously, where it needs to stay.
Okay.
If I may, the pond was erected-
Why don't you just give us your name?
Matt McAllier, Jamie's husband, also on 718. The pond was erected as a retention, detention pond for the subdivision for the storm drains in this. So, it is meant to catch the runoff, and because of the slope of the yard, even though there was grass underneath the deck, all of the slope of the yard does empty into the pond naturally.
Okay.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
And we maintain the pond. It was never maintained before we were homeowners, and now we maintain it solely at our expense.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'll open this now to public comment. Did you want to-
Public comment.
Okay, so could you come up-
My name is James-
So, just come up to the microphone.
I live at 791 Tennyson Downs Court, just about half a block down from the McAllier structure, which was designed by the renowned architect David Willison. I'm familiar with this particular property. Last year, just before this board, some modifications were proposed and were granted by the McAlliers, and they did a first-class job. The architect David Willison would have been most proud of what they did. And being familiar with the architect's work, both in Gross Point and in the Bloomfield Hills area, I'm familiar with David Willison's work. He would be very proud to see this first-class type of modification done to his designed home, and it presents no intrusion whatsoever on the floodplain pond, but is a nice accolade not only to the McAlliers' property, but it's also a fine addition and an enhancement to all of our properties here in the Willison properties there, formerly known as Pine Woods. So, I've seen their kind of work and their taste. It's of the finest standards. There's no intrusion whatsoever on any natural features, but it is definitely an enhancement, not only to their property, but an enhancement to all of the homes here in our wonderful neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that effective commentary. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
With regard to the permission request, with regard to the appeal at 718 Browning Court, for the accessory structure, I move the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood. It is obviously a great improvement, and the way it's oriented on the home, the home is oriented on the lot. It does not affect the retention pond. So, with regard to the permission request, that is my commentary. And that, I'm going to move on to the dimensional variance for the appeal at the same address for the dimensional variances that are required for the proposed deck encroaching 21 feet into the 25-foot natural feature setback and a proposed shed and landscape wall located in the northerly side yard and a shed encroaching- Okay, we're going to stop right there. It must, all right, so I'm going to stop at the point where the northerly side yard is where the shed is. I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the topography of the lot. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by the fact that it is consistent with other homes in the area. The deck itself is a replacement, so to speak. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given the sloping topography, and it is not self-created. So, if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
So, I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you, Al.
So, calling item five, 3345 CHICKERING LANE.
Hello. My name is Daniel Viderstein from 3345 CHICKERING LANE, seeking the approval of installation of a standard-size hot tub on the southeast corner of the building. The hot tub would be installed on the existing flat paver patio, and it's already been surrounded by the evergreens to demonstrate that, you know, we respect the neighbors and their privacy, and it's completely out of sight from both the street and neighboring properties.
So, is that picture, I'm sorry to interrupt you, in the lower right accurate then? Because it says view to CHICKERING LANE. It looks like it's visible.
I'm sorry?
So, the lower right picture?
Yes. It is visible from the lake.
Oh, okay.
That's from the lake.
Yeah, from the lake. It's from-
Well, that's the view towards CHICKERING.
Correct. Sorry about it. So, the landing is at least 12 feet below the street level, so it's not visible from the street.
Got it. I see. You have to look at the two pictures together. Okay.
Is it already installed?
No. It's been delivered. It's been sitting there for a while. I've been waiting for the certificate of occupancy before I start this process. I just didn't want to delay certificate of occupancy.
So, can you tell me the hedges that we see in this bottom right coming this way? Are there other locations this hot tub could work that don't require variance?
Unfortunately, there's no spot for it. It was poorly planned on our side.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open this to public comment. Anyone who'd like to speak on this item? You can come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Wilma Dimitrievich. I'm a resident on CHICKERING LANE. In fact, I'm the immediate next-door neighbor to the Vidershains.
Andrew.
And pardon?
Andrew.
3361 CHICKERING LANE. Thank you. So, my house abuts this south side of their home, and they built a lovely home, and it's a great advantage for the neighborhood. It's just a striking home, and I have no objection to this hot tub on their property. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? So, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion or motion.
With respect to the property located in 3345 CHICKERING LANE, I would move to approve the permission request for the proposed hot tub because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The size, use, and location of the accessory structure is compatible with the area and will not hinder adjacent properties, and it will not be objectional because of noise, fumes, et cetera. I would also move to grant the dimensional variance for the proposed hot tub located in the southerly side yard based upon a showing of practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be burdensome due to the slope of the lot and the fact that the home's already existing and it slopes down toward the water. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors because it would be screened with evergreen trees, and the neighbor that would be most affected is in agreement with it. The unique circumstances of the property are related to it being lake frontage and the sloping topography, and it's not self-created. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to installation, and the evergreen screening shall be required to remain in place so that the hot tub is screened at all times.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you.
So, calling item six, 2822 TURTLE GROVE COURT.
Jack Kelly, Imagine Design &amp; Build, 19275 GERALD, Northville, Michigan.
Jason Garing, Oscars Pools, 26549 Taylor.
So, could you give us some background on the need for the variance?
We applied for a permit, and then we got denied just because the location classifies it as two front yards. So, we just need to get that hopefully approved so he can- So we just need to get that hopefully approved so he can have a backyard and a pool and, you know, design with, like everybody else in that neighborhood.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? I'll open this to the public for comment. Is anyone like to speak on this item? I will close the public hearing then, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
So all this is going to be screened, accessory structures, the proposed landscape plan?
Yeah, and behind the house, it's a huge hill anyway, so it sits well below it and you can't see it from the road at all.
So could we go back to the landscape plan? So could you describe for us the type and height of the vegetation?
The trees across the back are existing. They're Austrian pines, probably 30 feet tall. They've been there for a long time. And again, there's a huge burn behind the house. You can't even see the road when you're sitting in the house at all. But just again, the practical difficulty would be just two front yards.
So what are the trees that are being added?
They're going to be white pines.
And where are they? Where are the trees being added?
If you see to the left of the screen...
I have a pointer if you want to help.
So this area is all protected. This is all screened. So again, there's some old trees in here mixed with some new trees along this side right here. And this would be the pool right there. And this has been approved by the HOA as well.
And there's no illumination on the sports court proposed, right? Okay. Okay, I'm prepared to make a motion unless anyone else has something.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to start with the permission request at 2822 Turtle Grove Court for the proposed pool and spa and sports court. So for all three of those accessory structures, I'm going to move that they be approved as submitted. The applicant demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood and will not discourage the adjacent use of property because they are within the setbacks and will be screened 12 months out of the year from public view. With regard to the dimensional variance for the pool, the spa, the sports court, and the fence in the secondary frontage, I'm going to move that those also be approved as submitted. The applicant demonstrated all standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the location of the property in the township being, having two frontages. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that these accessory structures are common and again, they are going to be screened from public view and are within the setbacks that the township has prescribed in the ordinances. The unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, again, given its location in the township with multiple frontages, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated above. So you should get all of your permits within one year for the pool and the spa and all your permits should be obtained prior to construction. You will have to have, it will have to be screened. So 12 months out of the year, evergreen screening. They'll have to meet or exceed the height of the structures at the time that they're planted. You will also have to get your permits for the sports court and obtain that prior to construction as well. That also will have to be screened 12 months out of the year with evergreens. The use of the sports court is limited to daytime, or to daylight hours rather, and no illumination for the sports court. Support.
So I have a motion and support. Now I'd just note that in our packet, we do have a letter of approval from Victor International Corporation, so it went through the association approval process. You know, some of the conditions that are in that letter have been met by the presentation. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Calling item 7, 711 Hickory Heights Drive.
Hi, how are you? My name is Josepher Pallone. I reside at 711 Hickory Heights Drive. Today, we are here seeking a permission request for two items, a sunken-in hot tub as well as a TV mount so we can watch TV outside. These items were erected without permission from the board and I want to apologize on behalf of my family for that. I know, I'm sure you've heard this a lot of times before, but my contractor is really responsible for that, even though I'm the homeowner. He had gotten plans for the backyard approved by the city, but when those adjustments were made, he did not go to the board for approval and I wasn't aware of that as well. So I do want to apologize on behalf of my family. So again, we're looking for the TV wall. You could see the TV mount from the street, so we did place at the time of height the arborvitae's just as tall as the TV mount, which they have been planted already.
So, excuse me, are those arborvitae's shown in that picture?
No, they are not, sir.
So could you, I know you've got your hands full there, but could you show us with a pointer where you added those arborvitae?
Right behind the wood wall there.
So the wall's totally screened?
That's correct, from the street. Yeah, that's correct. And actually, I did submit those photos.
Yeah, I think I did.
And I was told they would be in the slideshow as well. And then as far as the hot tub goes, that is sunken two feet underground. Both of these things are within guidelines, within the setback guidelines. I know that there's several neighbors here today that are going to object to that and we have some neighbors as well that are in support of us. We have four neighbors that we share a yard with. Two of them are here today and the two that support us are not here today. So after seeking advice from my lawyer, he's recommending that we go for an adjournment at this time so that we can make sure that we come to the meeting prepared. And so I'm seeking adjournment so that we can be more prepared for the meeting because my counsel was not able to be here.
Do you think you need that?
Well, if he wants to talk to his neighbors.
I mean, you know, I...
I would say that's enlightened and an exceptional, you know, listening to your lawyer is always a good idea.
So, you know, we just want to make sure, you know, basically, we share a yard with four neighbors and two of them do support us and two don't. And of course, when they show up with a group of their friends, we want to make sure we're...
So you want a harmonious neighborhood, so that's fine.
Yeah. I pray for that one day.
Okay, all right.
So...
Can I ask a quick question before, you know, we do anything here? The notice that we're looking at here mentions natural feature setback, but we're not looking...
That's not on the before you.
Okay.
I don't think that's, that's not correct.
Okay. That's all I want to make sure. If he's going to be discussing things that he would feel...
Yeah, and I guess, I mean, we're going to adjourn this, but I thought the objections were from the neighbors that the wall hadn't been screened.
If that was the objection, that has been resolved and we do have pictures. If that's something that, you know, we'd be able to move forward on, but we did provide screening and I did email those and I actually completely screened. They're like 10 feet tall at the time of planting as well. That was done later, once I found out, you know, that this all was supposed to be approved before it was done. But again, we wanted, we spoke to legal counsel because there were some neighbors who aren't in support of it and since we didn't have the support of the neighbors here today that do support us, I spoke to legal counsel and they recommended that we maybe go for adjournment on this to make sure that we are completely safe here. But I did plant those arborvitae's and I want to apologize to the board because these things were dropped in before the approval was complete.
I can verify that he did send the photographs with the screening on the wall. I don't have it in the packet unfortunately.
I have the email on my phone as well.
Yeah, I can.
So I have a question. Have the neighbors that have some complaints seen the new screening, more important than us?
They haven't, you know, they're here today. I've seen a lot of the neighbors, some of them I met for the first time. The neighbor that we share a yard with, we have had very bad relationships with and they showed up with a group of their friends who live in the neighborhood to try to show support, I guess, dis-support against us. And so today, after speaking to legal counsel, they said that we should ask for adjournment to make sure that we have the support of the neighbors that do support the TV mount and the hot tub. That's, and the hot tub is two feet underground, so it cannot be seen from the street.
I move to table this.
Support.
Okay.
I move to table and support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your request to table is granted and...
Hopefully you can work with your neighbors.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. It's just some neighborhood stuff, you know, we have to work. We want to have everybody happy here, so.
Thank you for that enlightened perspective.
Okay.
Helpful. Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, thanks. Say bye, Sonny.
So calling item 8, 2747 Turtle Lake Drive.
Hi, I'm Tom Kellet with Keller Construction, representing John and Cindy Luce. The request here is for a swim spa approximately 8 by 22 by 2 feet high. It's in the rear yard and it is underneath an existing terrace.
That's what I wanted to ask you about. So when I look at the terrace, it looks like it's all stone underneath. You're going to put it underneath there on top of that stone?
Well, partially on top, but mostly on the, you know, underneath. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? So I'll open this to the public for comment. Anyone like to speak on this item? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
In regard to the appeal at 2747 Turtle Lake Drive for the swim spa underneath the terrace, I approve the request to be approved and submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because of the location of the structure and the fact that it's not visible from the neighbors or the street. If approved, the motion must include, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreens may be required to screen the pool from public view at the time of installation, 12 months out of the year if needed, if needed at the back of the property.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion?
Well, I guess just...
I would remove the evergreen screen.
Just so, okay, yeah. Well, what I was going to say is you would only need evergreens if it's going to be visible from the public, but it looks like where it is and set. It's not...
It's effectively, you know, it's already screened.
The lake in the back and neighbor, left neighbor to the right. If.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, right. So support. I don't know. I think that's fine.
So we're eliminating that from the motion, the screening?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So as clarified, I'll just say that's clarified as opposed to amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
So item 9, 444 Steeplechase Court.
Hi, Ryan Bubell, homeowner, 444 Steeplechase Court. Unlike most people, I'm going to do mine in reverse. I'm seeking the board's approval for an already-existing and installed hot tub. The hot tub is a 6-foot by 42-inch custom cedar hot tub that I installed into an existing deck. It's fully contained in the rear yard and not in any setback. I'm, I have to look at my drawing here. I'm 41 feet off of my east lot line and I left this dimension out in my drawing. I'm 65 feet off my southern lot line. So the southern lot line is, there's a lot of discussion about screening of the actual structures. My southern lot line is comprised of tall maples and other mature trees. We planted a line of viburnums along the southern lot line. The deck is currently screened. You can see, oh, it's about a nine or 10-foot dug fur which screens the, which would be the east lot line. The mechanical has been installed under an existing deck and is screened by low-slung boxwoods. From my western lot line, the hot tub is completely unviewable from that neighbor. So we have an elevation drop that starts west and then goes east. So by the time you get to my lot, my neighbor's lot is about three or four feet above mine, so that neighbor can't see it. My neighbor to the south, you can see his home on the left picture. The tub is viewable barely through the viburnums, but if you, if you can scroll, are you running the deck?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you go back a slide, you can't really see the, I wish you could see a front view of the bottom right picture. So this kind of tub was chosen because it fits the aesthetic of the deck. My neighbor to the, to the south enjoys it. I mean, they're in it all the time. They enjoy to look at it. I prefer that if we can get to the point of approving it, I'm not requiring to screen it. Although I'm happy to whether ZBA wants me to do, frankly.
So those trees that are there, that's on, those are on your property?
Yeah, they're on my property.
Okay.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. So you're looking east right now, so that neighbor is actually at a lower elevation than my residence. So on the, that neighbor's landscaping blocks his view of my tub and that landscape has existed since, I'm sorry, his landscaping has existed since we moved in. And for extra screening, we installed that tall dug fur right there.
Any other questions from the board? So I'll open this to the public for comment. Anyone like to speak on it? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion. Seems to me like he's going to need to add some screening because you can, you can see it. Okay.
With respect to the property located at 444 Steeplechase Court, I would move to grant the permission request for the existing hot tub because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The hot tub is used, it's compatible in the area. The size is compatible and the location will not negatively impact any of the neighbors. If this motion is approved, however, application for all permits must be made within five business days and additional evergreen screening shall be required to screen the hot tub and it must meet or exceed the height of the tub at the time of planning.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request with the condition is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calling item 10, 4364 Orchard Hill Drive.
Good evening. Tyler Dobson with TD Design. I'm the architect for the program and my address for that is 1008 Satterley Road, Bloomfield.
Hi, everyone. My name is Drew Pickering. I'm at 4364 Orchard Hill Drive. Thank you all for hearing us out today. We are looking to add an, gosh, where do you get up here and start going? An addition to our house and then extend the garage out. We're looking to do it, I have a brother who will be spending significant time with us who has special mobility concerns, so we'd be looking to add this additional space as a living space for him to come out and spend with us. And then addition to the garage as well and spread that out so we'd have room for wheelchairs, walkers, and a mobility van. Also looking to future-proof the house from that standpoint. We've got elderly parents and if anything were to happen to them in short notice, we would become caregivers in that case for my brother. Tyler and myself, both volunteers on the board of the neighborhood, we take very seriously the neighborhood and the appearance. We've spent great time and design to make sure that this will look really nice. We've spoken since January when we started the process with all of our neighbors and included everybody. And we've got feedback, I believe, in the packet from our adjoining neighbors. They asked to come today, but hopefully the email will suffice. Our situation on this is somewhat unique. We are looking to come within, I'm looking for the term here, I guess, you could jump in, but, you know, as far as basically the road, our neighbor, we actually have this road here, is actually township-owned. So we are not looking to get within 16 feet of our neighbor's property line. We're just asking to get within the 16-foot setback of the township access to the flood zone in the back there. And so we'd be about, what?
Six foot six.
Six foot six off. I'll let him speak. He knows the words to use.
Just, just to be clear, we're not looking to build in the city's property. It's, there is a 12-foot easement between the Pickering's property and the property to the east. And what we're looking to do is, is we build, we're essentially looking for a 9-foot 6-inch variance to go into the 16-foot setback on their property. Reason we bring up the access path there is we would still be well beyond 16 feet from the neighboring property with the addition that's proposed. We did look at a number of different options. This is obviously staying in harmonious with the neighborhood as a single-story structure, which half our neighborhood is, and just bringing the garage to be a front-facing from the side-facing, giving us the additional room. I don't know if you have the floor plan handy there, but you'll see from the floor plan if, we can bring that up. It's going to allow...
So go back, go back for a second to the driveway picture, next one. So right now, when you drive up that driveway, are you driving over the easement?
Yes.
Okay, so this is going to address that, right? You're not, not going to be in the easement?
We would still be in the easement. The driveway would still be there and it would, the garage, we would have to add concrete, asphalt, whatever we need to do there to put the front-facing garage and kind of have that come off the left side. Right, so do we have the, do you have the site plan from the civil engineer? It does show it, but yeah, the, the access from the street is still where it's always been for decades, but then the driveway will curve to the west to be in front of the existing garage room, which is completely on the Pickering's property. So we would only be on the path as it exists today until we need to curve around. There's a, there's a large maple tree. Yes, yes, thank you. There's a large... There's a large maple tree just to the left off camera here that's about over 200 years old. It's about five and a half foot in diameter. It's, it's, so that, that's one of the restricting things. There you go. There you go. Yes, thank you.
You can use the laser pointer.
Yeah, yeah. So, right here is an existing five-foot diameter, 200-plus-year-old tree that obviously no one wants to touch. You can see where the, the new driveway would curve around and line up to the, the new proposed 16-foot garage door.
But it's, I guess you're reducing the impact of the easement by this configuration.
Yes, yeah. And, and part of what the, the civil engineer pointed out is like today it doesn't really drain properly where it should go and when they redo the construction and do the construction work there, that should help that that area drains back. It's, it's an access path to what was originally a, called a public space back in the 50s when the, when the neighborhood was, was designed. So, the Pickering's and about 10, eight to 10 of the neighbors have properties that have bought this, what's now a wetland. No one can build on that. It's in the floodplain. No one will ever, the, the city could never sell that property and someone build on it just because it's completely part of the floodplain. So, there's no, no risk of, of this being like, hey, we need to build a road back there that has always been accessed, but for, for decades, the neighbors who have adjoining properties have taken care of that space. It's not maintained by the city. It's maintained by the neighborhood or the, I should say, the neighbors in the neighborhood.
Can you explain this site plan right here?
Sure. This was done, this was, this was done and submitted prior to getting the civil engineering drawing and actually get the, we contracted with Keef Engineering out of Rochester. They found that it, the set, the, it's not 12-foot eight, it's actually just 12 feet wide. And once we got those plans, we did revise our drawings to go from a three-foot four setback to a six-foot six setback because we were able...
I wanted to clarify.
Yep. No, I appreciate that. Yep. So, we were able to look at the, the requirements that we're going to need inside the garage to have a van with a loading ramp and all of that inside weatherproof. And then you can see beyond that where it steps back and there's some screening called out there. That's where the existing, uh, condensing units are for the current home. They'll still be in that area, still screened, but we'll have the one-bedroom addition that's on the same level as the first floor behind that garage that would be a living space for, for Drew and Lynette's brother.
I just want to clarify. I think when you were speaking, you mentioned a, a nine-and-a-half-foot variance?
Yeah, I may have not said that correctly. We're looking for, instead of where we would be 16 feet back from our property line, we're looking to come only six foot six from the property line. So, it would be nine foot six of...
Okay, because you're, we've only noticed this for a nine-foot variance. So, the most you can get out of us is nine feet, not nine-and-a-half feet.
Okay, I think I put that in the other...
Confusion between the different series.
There was a little confusion along the way.
Okay. Excuse me.
Can you live with that?
That would be nine-sixty variance. So, just, I just had our application. We wrote in there, we would, it's asked, the city requires 16-foot. We're asking for a six-foot six setback. So, that's where I got the nine foot six. Sorry if there's any confusion on that.
So, we have to renotice?
Well, I guess, guess the, my point is we noticed it for nine feet. We can act up to nine feet. If you need nine-and-a-half feet, we're going to have to table this and renotice it.
You'd need to, I'm sorry.
We'll have to table and renotice this for hearing.
We could, we could work with nine feet.
Okay, that's what I, I wanted to be sure you could.
We could, yeah, instead of being, yeah, we can work with that.
Because we're talking about six inches.
Six inches less building space. I think we can make that work.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, that should not be a problem.
Quick question. With regard to the driveway, is the old driveway going to stay in place, that, the part that is actually not being built on or is that being pulled up and the new driveway is the only driveway that would be there?
As we have it right now, that would be left there because that needs to be, as I understand it, I could be wrong here, there, there's weight structures and the yard beyond that is levelized and built so that the township trucks can get back there? If, if that's possible, I'm thinking that, I'll leave that up to the township.
So, it's going to stay as is?
We kind of planned to leave it there just to destroy things, but if we need to.
I was just curious about the permeable space.
Yeah, be careful what the easement says.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? So, I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this? Close the public hearing.
Do you have the neighbors' comments? I think it's... Yes, they got, okay, good. Thank you.
Bring it back to the board.
Well, I'd like to make a motion. Like to make a motion to, wait, wait. To approve the dimensional variance request at 4364 Orchard Hill be approved as submitted on these drawings for the nine feet that was noticed. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards of practical difficulty because of the location of the existing house on the lot, the unique path beside the house, and, you know, a valid need for accommodating some special needs on the property. It's still within scale of the neighbors. There's no injustice to the neighbors due to the extra 12 feet that does exist there and it's not self-created because of the location on the lot. Should this be approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits obtained prior to construction.
Support.
So, I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item 11, 6380 Sunningdale.
Good evening. I'm Bill Johnson, owner of 6380 Sunningdale Drive, and we're seeking permission to locate a sauna on our back patio. It's within the required setbacks and since application, we have discussed with some of our neighbors, there were no concerns with them and gave the plan to the HOA and they had no comment.
So, do you have any screening plan for the sauna?
We don't have a solid plan yet. That, at the top of this very crudely drawn landscape drawing...
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't read that. That's why I'm asking the questions.
There was a deadline.
So, if you can make the plan more solid for us...
Pretty much all of these trees have been topped or coppiced by the DTE contractors due to the lines running through there. So, kind of where we are is that the neighbors right behind us, we're all trying to figure out what we're going to do to, to kind of rebuild what was a natural screen there because so much was taken out. If needed, we will do something like an arbor vida that will be closer to that patio area, but ideally we would kind of restore some that we have in the back. Neighbors to the north, we'll need to see in the winter if they will be able to see it. And the neighbor to the south, we have to work on screening there. There is an existing fence down there, but it's only, it's less than four feet tall.
Because it does look like you have a view there through to the back.
Right.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open this to the public for comment. Any comments? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion with regard to the appeal at 6380 Sunningdale Drive for the accessory structure, permission request for the accessory structure, proposed sauna located in the rear yard. I move the request to be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with the Section 42-7.6 standards because the size of the accessory structure is compatible with adjoining properties based on the, the, the size of the lot. So, if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. Additional evergreen planting shall be required to screen the proposed sauna from public view.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Calling item 12, 3514 Sutton Place.
Good evening. My name's Stephen Wittenup. I'm the homeowner and with me is Charlie Murza from Murza Construction. So, this is my request to modify and slightly enlarge an existing pool house that's been in the property since approximately 2006 or 2007. It was not completed, it's, it's not finished on the inside. My goal is to finish it on the inside. I also want to increase it in the rear by about eight feet, three inches, four inches to install a sauna. We are still within the 16-foot setback and the file that we presented with the application includes a letter from the closest neighbor at 3515 Sutton Place that they have no objection. There were, I did have about seven very large arborvides behind the pool house. They were destroyed in a, in a ice storm in March or April this year. I've since pulled them out and once the, if approved, once the construction is, is complete, I will reinstall some tall arborvides. Other than that, that's the extent of it.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a quick question. So, the sauna is going inside the expanded...
Yeah, that's why I need to enlarge it. I don't really have enough room. It's divided into like one-third, two-thirds, one-third. On the far north side is a mechanical room. The two-thirds is, that I want to enlarge is, consists of a little changing room and just some shelves and some towels and a few toys in case nieces and nephews come over and use the pool. And I don't really have enough room to put in a four-person sauna. So, that's why we need to move it back, but we're still within the 16-foot setback and the neighbor closest has no objection.
So, the only thing before us, Patty, is the addition, right? Not, not the sauna?
Correct.
Okay. And it's a permission request because it's not in the backyard? Okay.
Variance. Variance because it's not in the backyard.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Oh, a variance. That's right. Okay, so what's wrong in this thing?
So, it's a permission request and a dimensional variance?
Based on the secondary frontage of Corton Road.
Okay.
Any other...
Both?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's wasn't clear in here.
Any other questions?
So, please add the, the dimensional variance.
Sure.
Any motion?
When you make your motion...
You need to...
We have to open public comment.
So, I'll open this to the public for comment. Would anyone like to speak on this item? I'll close the public comment and bring it back for discussion or a motion.
I can make a motion. I'll start with the permission request for this addition at 3514 Sutton Place. I'm going to move that this addition be approved as submitted. The applicant demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood and is a common thing that we find in this area. As far as the dimensional variance for it not being in the backyard because of the secondary frontage, I'm going to move that that variance also be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant demonstrated all standards for practical difficulty, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the lot, the lot's location in the township and the secondary frontage that it does have. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that this pool house is already in existence. It's just essentially an upgrade and there is going to be screening so that neighbors will not be able to see it. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, again, given the secondary frontage that it has there off of Corton Road, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated. All, all permits should be made within one year and obtained prior to construction. You will have to file a single-family affidavit with the township just saying nobody's living in the structure. And while you do have the plan to put the evergreens after everything is, is done, I will add to the motion that there should be evergreen planting, screening this 12 months out of the year and they should meet or exceed the height of the proposed pool addition at the time that they're planted.
Agreed.
So, I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Calling item 1380 Devon Road.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Sack. I'm the homeowner. This is my husband.
Brian Sack, homeowner.
Of 80 Devon Road in Bloomfield Township. We're seeking approval for a four-foot-high black aluminum wrought iron fence for the dogs. We're requesting two variances, one for the rear setback and one for the side yard. So, they will encroach 10 feet into the required 25-foot rear and it will encroach 10 feet into the 16-foot side yard requirement. The reason being is we have two small Pomeranians and also a one-year-old and we are really close to Squirlick Road, so we want it for the safety purposes. And it will be attractive fence. It will actually match the neighbors across the street have a front yard fence and it will match that and it will match the house also. We're hoping that it looks attractive and matches the 1920s look of our, our new home.
So, you have a landscape plan? Could we go to that?
Yes.
So, could you explain your plan?
Okay.
It's really not a plan. It's just what's already there. So, there's a garden bed that goes around the whole yard and you can't, you can't really see into the, the houses behind us or really most of this, most of the side yard that we're asking for the variance for, you can't see into it either.
So, there's a garden bed that, as you can see from the photo, it wraps all the way around and there's trees behind the garden beds. So, like thick trees, so either like the rear neighbors and the side neighbors can't even see the fence, the fence that we proposed to do. And it will be kind of small, so it won't...
So, that's the garden bed right there?
Yeah.
Like in the rear and to the side, those are the, the sides that we're going to be asking for the variance on.
So, your question, is the fence inside?
Yeah. So, we'll be within the garden bed.
The garden bed is like a shared property line with the neighbors, the bed, the rear and the side.
So, where is the fence in relationship to that?
It's in front of the garden bed, so it doesn't go into the garden bed.
So, it kind of just wraps around, like hugs the garden bed?
Yeah.
And then it will come around the driveway, which you can't see from this photo, but it won't even extend to the other property line on the other side. So, it, it's just going to be go behind the house and, yeah.
So, your fence is up against the garden bed or a few feet?
Yes.
Yeah, probably within a foot or so. Yeah, that's the idea.
How, how well is that screened in the middle of winter? Your neighbors view?
I mean, it's pretty thick. I mean, it's probably not perfect, but it's, a lot of it is evergreens on the one, you know, the one side, so.
That's actually looking to the other side.
It's the other side. This is the next photo. So, you can see on the upper picture, there's evergreens all back there and then there's a few evergreens in the...
We plan to put a few more in also once we move in. We plan to put in some more arborvides and remove some of the old shrubs.
Yeah, and so that's, that's what I was asking about, your plan. So, that it wasn't clear from your plan what was going to be planted. And from what you just said, I'm still not clear, so...
Is it required that we have a, a screening for a fence?
So...
But the four-foot wrought iron screen? No.
I would say no in this situation.
I thought, yeah, I, I think we've done four-foot wrought iron without screening.
We have done it without screening. It depends on the situation.
Sure.
For this, you've got a lot of natural landscaping around. This is one odd-shaped lot, by the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But we weren't even sure if we needed the, the 25-foot variances. Some places were probably fine and some places.
It was hard to measure because it goes up a weird incline.
It's from this back part here.
I don't understand that like spike either, but.
Yeah, the staff plays a game with me and they actually ask me to describe the shape of various lots and on this one, I said it looks like a lighter with a flame coming up from it.
Yeah, it does look like that. That's a good way to describe it.
Or a little dipper. All right, so anyway, I'll open this for the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? Okay, I'll close public here and bring it back.
Okay, I'll make a motion here. So let's start with the permission request for the proposed dog enclosure fence at 80 Devon Road. I'm going to move that it be approved as requested. The applicant demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because this accessory structure is common to the neighborhood and is actually going to be an enhancement because it will help to keep the dogs enclosed so that they, as far as safety for nearby people. So with regard to the dimensional variance, also at 80 Devon Road for the proposed dog enclosure, encroaching 10 feet into the required 16-feet side yard setback and encroaching 10 feet into the required 25-foot rear yard setback, I'm going to move that that also be approved as requested. The applicant demonstrated all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the fact that they have pets, a young child, and a uniquely shaped lot. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that, again, this is a common structure that we see. We've heard no opposition this evening. And while it may not be fully screened, there is, there is a good amount of natural species there now. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated given its shape and the family's unique circumstances. This is not self-created due to the reasons stated. I will add that all permits should be made within one year and obtained prior to construction and I'm not going to add a requirement for additional evergreen screening.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So calling item 145074 Diana Drive.
And before we start this, I want to disclose that I live across the street from this property, but it will not factor into my decision here.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Hingevold. I'm the lawyer for the Lanins who could not be here tonight. They are seeking a variance because they have a house with an existing deck that they would like to replace with a same type of deck as the existing one. Their house address, actually, the rear of the house faces Diana Drive, but that's where their house address is. So in other words, the rear of the house is where their, you know, would normally be the front. So they need a variance to put a deck in essentially their front yard, which is the rear of the house. And without a deck there, then they would have a door wall that would be raised without the ability to walk out into, onto a deck. The property is, that would create a hardship. There is no injustice to the neighbors. This deck has been, was existing when the Lanins moved in in 2019. The deck has been in existence for at least the last 27 years based on review of the records. And again, it's not self-created because it was there when they had moved in. They're just looking to, to replace what exists.
So, so you're not enlarging the footprint at all?
Not enlarging the footprint, but I do believe the footprint does require an, an encroachment or an adjustment for an encroachment five feet into the 40-foot setback as it exists now.
Got it. Okay. Any other questions from the board? So I'll open this to the public for comment. Anyone like to speak on this item? Close public comment, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
I can make a motion here. For the permission request for the proposed deck at 5074 Diana Drive, I'm going to move that this be approved as requested. The applicant demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because this is a common structure that we see in our neighborhoods. For the dimensional variance encroaching, what was it? You said five feet into the 40-foot required setback? I'm going to move that that also be, oh, and for it being in the front yard. I'm going to move that that be approved as submitted. The applicant demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the multiple frontages on this lot. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that this is just a replacement of what's already existing. There's not going to be an enlargement of the, the current encroachment. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, again, given the multiple frontages and the fact that this is a replacement of something that's been there for a long time. This is not self-created due to the reasons stated and you should get all permits within one year and obtain prior to construction.
Thank you.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
So calling item 154845 North Adams.
Good evening, my name is Jason Bartek. I'm the owner at 4845 North Adams and I am seeking a variance or approval to actually have a shed placed in what the city deems is my front yard. I kind of have a unique situation. It's a corner lot. Although my driveway is on Dowling Street, my house faces Adams. So out of the 1.93 acres, 1.4 and a half of it are facing Adams and technically the front yard. In order to have a shed, it is the best place for it to be on the property where it can be hidden. Obviously, it's not going to be an eyesore on the neighbors whatsoever and just to meet the setback allotment, it has to go in the front yard. So that's why I'm here. I also have the president of my HOA here to speak on my half and then the neighbor directly 4825 next to me has no issue with it whatsoever.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
My only question as far as screening, we do have a letter of somebody opposing saying they would be able to see the shed, but typically we would require it to be screened with evergreens anyway. So do you have a plan for to do that?
So there's actually a massive magnolia tree in front of it. I'm not, in front of the house, I'm not sure how they would ever say they would be able to see it, but.
I think it's from, I think it's from here. Well, and a magnolia tree, so.
Year-round.
Exactly, exactly. So it would have to be something evergreen. Well, plus and a, and a mag, I mean, so I'll just say that's likely not going to suffice and probably we're going to hear from
Sure.
your neighbor. Okay, thank you.
So hold on a second. Any other questions from the board? So I'm going to open this for the public hearing and anyone like to comment? So I assume you're, you're here to give public comment?
Yes.
Did you name, name and address?
My name is Jeff Duma. I'm at 1020 Dowling, right next door. And I'm the president of the homeowners association. We reviewed these drawings. They are in compliance. The board has approved this. And because Adams is listed as his, his front yard, okay, that's, that's why we're here, we're revisiting this. I don't, I think I might be the only one who could see this and I would have to go to the back of my yard to look at it. So I'm, I would be surprised that that, anybody could see it with that magnolia, but certainly if there's concerns there, he certainly would be able to do something there. It's got to be 400 feet from, yeah, from Dowling and from Adams.
Yeah, it's the 1080 Dowling, which is.
Which is on a hill.
Yeah.
And they, that's, I'm sorry. That's, that's interesting that they opposed it because that house has been up for sale, empty for going on four months.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I.
Okay, sure.
Houses for sale. I mean, but.
So, so hold on a second. Just, just want, so you're, you're speaking. He can respond. So I just want to be, what, what is your position on the request? Are you in favor?
We're in favor of it.
Okay.
This is, it fits perfectly. I've talked to the, all of the surrounding neighbors except the one that's no longer living at, at the other one. And we would, we would like to see it approved.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? I'll close public hearing and bring it back. Is there anything you'd like to say in response?
No, that's all whatsoever. I'm sorry for speaking out of turn there, but like I said, 1080 Dowling has been up for sale for three or four months and they left immediately, so the house is, has no one living in it. So that's kind of surprising to me to hear that somebody had a comment. But other than that, that's where we're at.
I, I guess I'll just add to that comment. So typically, obviously, we like to hear from the neighbors and when neighbors are in agreeance, that helps to make our decision. But with that said, people move all the time and when we approve something, it's approved and it carries with the property, right? Not with the homeowner. So our concern is that, you know, whether it's that neighbor or somebody else that's going to move in, we like to keep these accessory structures shielded because typically we don't want to have so many buildings visible in the township. People like the open space, they like the greenery.
And I agree too because you've got, it's not necessarily whether somebody sitting in their house looks out and sees it. If it's visible to people driving up and down the road.
Right.
That's what we want to avoid as well.
Yeah, no, I completely understand the comment. I, I, again, I'm just, it's not even that I'm taken back by the comment from potentially somebody at 1080, but like Jeff said, it, it's almost 400 yards away from Dowling Road and literally this amount of space between the end of the trees, looking all the way over to the property line to where the shed is actually going to go. I mean, you would have to stop your car and look hard over to even notice that it's there. So, go ahead.
No, no.
Well, but, but the point, so just, just to end it, the point of our ordinance is it has to be screened from public view. So you're going to have to comply with that. It sounds like you're okay with it. So I think with that, I think we can have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the permission request first at 5074 Diana Drive.
40 is 45. Are we at North Adams?
Yeah.
North Adams.
North Adams. 4845 North Adams. That it be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did comply, did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The size of the accessory structure is, is modest and well-compatible with adjoining properties. The use is appropriate in maintaining a property this size and the location will not hinder or discourage the use of adjacent property. Regards to the dimensional variance at the same 4845, I make a motion to approve the dimensional variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate practical difficulty. The, again, the multiple frontages make it difficult to determine a front versus a rear versus a side yard. And this is indeed behind the house. The unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated due to the yards and it is not self-created. So should the motions be approved, all application for all necessary permits must be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to construction. An additional evergreen shall be required to screen the view of your shed from any public view.
Support.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. So calling item 163930 Devon Gables.
Good evening, members of the board. Mr. Chairman, my name is Robert Carson, 4111 Andover Road, Bloomfield Township. And I'm here to address essentially two requests. They are caused by the unique burden of this property by having been surrounded by four, three roads. Some people count them as four. We'll say three roads. And because of that, obviously, we have the definition of everything's a front yard. Therefore, to put what would be in the rear of the house, it's a front yard, although it's the rear because the front of the house faces east as the prior house did also. And this may be the least intrusive or controversial. I understand there may be some controversy, but the least controversial of the requests. It is for a pool with some ancillary improvements. Bridges over what is called a lazy river. And it has tremendous screening. Additional screening has been added since the last time this board saw that. And in addition to that, as is common with pools and amenities throughout the township, there is a cabana. And under the cabana or below the cabana is the mechanical equipment, which is not exposed in any way. The pool is hundreds of feet from any neighbor and across the road from any neighbor. In addition to the roads going all the way around and definitionally causing it to be called front yards where improvements are going, this site borders commercial property and essentially will screen the rest of the area from the commercial uses. It looks at an office, or two office buildings, two banks and other offices. Comerica's there, I think it's Chase also that's on the corner. And large parking lots, intense use and Long Lake Road right on the other side of those buildings. There is a wall directly below the east side of this house, which is not an amenity you would like to normally see these buildings in a neighborhood. Our client has one other situation that I think I'd like to point out to everybody. Even though, I believe most members of, of the board are familiar with the topography, there's a 30-foot drop from where the house is sited down to Long Lake Road. The entrance to the house is very close to Long Lake Road, so there will be no traffic down the entire road of Mystic Valley. And the, the uses for the family. The other issues that have come before the board for which there have been grants by this board have established all the criteria necessary for the hardship that exists, which are not self-imposed.
So we'll have time for public comment. Please refrain from any comments while the applicant is speaking.
Now, we are prepared to demonstrate to you graphically, by pictures, by video, how this property will look, the extensive screening. No neighbor essentially will see anything with respect to this property. It has large trees that are evergreen, coniferous all the way around. They are being augmented by additional trees. Even beyond the trees that were here the last time that we're all here, there are additional trees that have been added. In addition to that, being responsive to some questions that the neighbors have raised, we have reduced the size of the pool and its uses by a third. That is in the write-up that has been given to you. Now, I would like to not overstay my welcome. I assume I'll be able to respond, but I would like to offer to you as much of the video or, or presentation as possible so that there would be no misunderstanding as to how people, you can see it. Hang on a second. I brought my own.
Brought your own pointer? Well, well-prepared.
I've done this once or twice before. So you can see if people are on the road here, we have a number of other pictures. So what you have to do is if you're on the road and you're looking up to see above the trees, you only get to see to this height as you're looking up to try to even see the house. So it's not just a question of how high this is. When you're on the road or when you are the neighbors across Mystic here, you'll see none of this. You'll see none of the improvements on the inside. None. You won't see the retaining walls, you won't see the driveway, except where you enter the driveway, obviously. You won't see the fencing all the way around the property because the fencing has been set back beyond the normal setbacks. And in front of the fencing on the roadside, there's additional arborvitae and evergreens all the way around the property. Perhaps it would be beneficial if we could bring up and go through the pictures under the shorter, each one. Maybe we're not. So a PowerPoint was provided, I think, to the township. Do you have it?
I'm sure we can get it, we can get it.
Do we have a thumb drive or anything?
So maybe we are waiting for that. Mr. Carson, a couple of questions. So could you, with your pointer?
Yeah.
Which you brought with you tonight? Show us the, where the arborvitae are being added. You said eight to 10 feet. I think it's in our materials, so.
Yeah, it's all the way around.
Okay.
Beyond what, what was already there and there are tall trees.
So.
This is all additional material.
So that's how many? How many arborvitae, do you know?
I can tell you in a second.
Oh, okay.
The landscape people will tell you.
Okay, so then, while we're waiting for that, I think at one, the previous, there was a rock scape with the slide, so that's been eliminated.
And Grotto Pool.
And the pool, so that's the one-third reduction, those two elements.
Of the square footage, and I think that's in your materials.
Okay.
In the write-up that, that came with this proposal.
I just wanted to confirm that, yeah. I just wanted to confirm that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, I think.
That would be, uh, important, okay.
So, um. Do you have it?
Yep, we have it now.
Okay, why don't you go through this as you're going relatively quickly, but.
For sure. Let's get back to your first slide. So again, a basic, uh, site overview, uh, showing the pool and lazy river, uh, location, and the Mystic Valley frontage, um, the screening, and the overall green space of the entire property.
So hold on, back up. Back up. Okay, so in this picture, uh, in the driveway in there, there's a row of trees in the center. Is, are those new? I don't seem to recall those. Are those trees new?
Oh, no.
Those are not. So what's the height of those trees?
Um, which trees are, those height, those trees there?
So in, in the row, entryway, road there, see the?
Those are existing trees.
Those three you're talking about?
Further down the driveway.
You're talking about up there.
Oh, this, this here?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are deciduous trees that'll be, uh, sixteen to twenty feet tall that are in the, the boulevard of the driveway.
Okay.
Those are new?
They're not.
Okay.
Okay. And so where are the new trees again? Just so we.
Oh, here, I'll, I can jump to that slide.
With your pointer. Oh, okay, next slide, very good.
Again, just familiarizing you with the property, this aerial view, so you see a lot of, there's already a lot of existing large evergreens that surround the property. You know, anything that we're gonna do is gonna accent that. You see the location of the pool, uh, uh, behind the house there, and the, you know, just the sheer amount of evergreens and screening that's already there. Again, another view from, uh, Long Lake looking towards the property. The Mystic, the pool in the Mystic Valley frontage. The detail, the cabana, pool, spa, fire pit, uh, pergola, and the, uh, the footbridges that go over the lazy river. Again, we're requesting the accessory structure permission and variance, uh, you know, for the, to build in the Mystic Valley frontage, and also variance to locate the pool equipment, uh, in the, uh, the, the basement of the cabana. So this highlights the screening. Um, we've always had the evergreen screening along Mystic Valley, which you can see where the car is there.
Yeah.
You have all that screening's there. Um, there's, because of the, the noted elevation change of the property, um, we're adding ten-foot, uh, green giant arborvitae screening at two different levels. So you have that first level of screening ju- directly behind the, uh, cabana. You have an additional level of, which is, will be four foot up, and then ten foot's another fourteen feet of screening that runs, um, you know, up to and along the cabana.
And those are all eight to ten feet?
Yes, sir. So that's, you know, uh, the pictures that are right is, uh, you know, demonstrates the size and the planting that we would use.
And what, 'cause I'm somewhat familiar with this, how tall do the green gi- giant arborvitae grow to?
Green giants get about twenty, twenty feet max.
That's, I thought they were quite large.
Yep, but we would probably keep them in a hedge, you know, very uniform, uh, for screening. At the bottom is the additional screening that we added in the place where the, uh, the rock scape and slide is gonna be. Again, we just have another, a mass of, uh, uh, we're running out of places to put additional screening. Um, but that's another mass of, uh, additional, uh, green giant arborvitae that would go in that area.
Do you know the width of the lazy pool? What's the distance from the, from the, you know?
It's a six-foot width is the width.
No, but I'm talking about from the, from the, uh, you know, edge of the curve on the left to the curve on right.
So that line that you see behind the, um, behind the cabana, that dotted line, is the, uh, the setback? So this is the, uh, thirty-five-foot, uh, setback here. So we're, I think we're forty foot, you know, we're five foot from that setback. So we're, I mean, we're even greater here from the, uh, that setback line. I'm not exactly sure what that distance is, at least ten feet.
No, I'm just trying to understand, how, how wide is the lazy, how much space does it take up on the, on, on the property? So how?
Oh.
I mean, is it, is, is it as wide as a basketball court? Is it as wide as, do you know?
Um, width-wise, it's, I don't, I mean, you see it's kind of oblong.
Yeah.
Asymmetric, so, uh, it's probably the shape of, uh, you know, a small basketball court, if you don't count that, that other size. Figuring during our calculations for the, the, we just took the actual, um, square footage.
I got it, yep.
Okay.
That's not necessary.
Because it's, it's green in between and green around, so. This is just representative of a, a cross-section that we had done, uh, and then we have a visual representation of it, again.
So this is to help with somebody looking up, if they're trying to look up at the house, they're seeing this, they'll never see through the trees, because they don't see above the trees.
So, as shown the other, earlier slideshow, we tried to put together a, a, a visual of what Mystic Valley will look like when we have the evergreens installed between existing evergreens. Um, these are large sixteen-to-twenty-foot, uh, Norway spruce that'll be installed, um, all the way from the entryway, all the way circling around, uh, and down Mystic Valley. So again, it's just a representation of, of what that'll be.
Are any of those Norway spruce in now?
They are. There are, we've been able to install roughly, I think, uh, maybe, maybe half, forty percent or half.
So how many is that? And how many more are you gonna add?
Seven have been installed.
Twenty-seven? And you're gonna add how many more?
At least twenty-seven. And again, that doesn't include that additional, all those, those green giant arborvitae that go in multiple levels going all the way up.
When do you anticipate all those being planted?
Um, let me see this. Just because of the, the, as the project is kind of.
Sure.
I mean, when we can begin construction of these, these different items, uh, those will proceed almost right away. There's, there's different things we need to be able to finalize the site plan and build some of the other items that were approved to be able to get down to, to that level. There's irrigation issues and all sorts of things, otherwise we would happily put the place in order.
So is it fair to say that as you're building the accessory structures that were already approved, you're supplementing them the landscape plan at the time that that structure's getting built or completed?
For sure.
Okay.
And are, are you, do you need to put any, uh, water, uh, sources for the trees? Or the, is the rainwater sufficient? Do you have, do you have anything, any sprinkle or?
Well, yeah, so we, um, that's one of the things that we need to do, that's one of the reasons why we haven't gone, is we've hand-watered until we, because of the elevation change and challenges of the walls that need to be built, um, we need to bring in irrigation mainline all the way down from the top, but it's in the way, there's, so up to this point, we've had to hand-water the trees that are there, um, and anything.
But the plan would be, it, there's gonna be a water source?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the entire, I mean, yeah.
There'll be an irrigation system.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm sure it's a very big investment to plant the trees, so obviously you want them to live.
For certain, yeah.
Yeah.
The homeowners make a huge investment in landscaping, trees, uh, uh, and screening for this property. The next slide, I could, Bob, if you wanna talk to, speak to this or?
Well, I, this is such an unusual setting, which we are prepared to demonstrate in the township, although I think you clearly know how unusual it is for the pool to be hundreds of feet and across a road from any of the neighbors. I mean, this one's four-hundred-and-forty feet, you could see three-hundred-and-five feet, two-seventy-four, and two-something, 'cause I can't read it back here. In through the trees, in two what?
Two-ninety-eight.
Two-ninety-eight. So approximately three-hundred to four-hundred feet away from the closest neighbors. Um, and fully screened, and the screening is not only a visual impediment, it also has sound attenuation, et cetera, which will benefit not only from the activity on this site, which obviously was three lots and could've been three houses, but also any bleed over from the commercial and for, from telegraph. Also, from Long Lake, which I've noticed lately has a tremendous amount of traffic for some reason, uh, and all of that screening will help not only the house, but the neighbors to the extent it attenuates the sound that's coming there. Go ahead.
The next slide just represents, this is a aerial photo of Baron Estates, um, just west on Long Lake.
We've been looking for some examples, uh, that you could see in developments that are going on right now, as to how close the pools are on the normal, or, or the lots that don't have roads on three sides. It's, it's a regular activity, uh, throughout the township. This is examples of that. Uh, we have another one that might be more usual. This is, um, this is Apple Lane, which is off Kirkway, and Apple Lane has, this is Apple Lane, right?
Yep.
Has one, two, three, four pools, right next to each other, in a neighborhood.
Just another view.
Right, throughout the township, the pools are normal, cabanas are normal, outside activity is normal, and, um, and is essentially expected. In fact, I think, uh, I could be wrong, one of the neighbors used to live right down the street, one of the current neighbors of this, uh, of, of where we are developing, right down the street from Apple Lane. Go ahead. All right, so this tells you what is going out, correct?
Correct, yep.
And been replaced by heavy landscaping.
Correct, yep.
Which you've seen. Okay?
Yep, and that.
And this is, this was the square footage calculation that you get to a third?
Yeah, there's, there's the same plan without that item and the evergreen screening that's, uh, been added in place.
So, I mean, there's, there's slight changes, the, this is gone, and, um, there was a, another part of the deck that came out further, that's gone, uh, which had, uh, the gazebo on there that, that was gone.
What's the dimensions of the pool?
The pool, like the main body of the pool is twenty-five by fifty.
Okay.
And then there is the.
I think that can give you a perspective then on how big the lazy river is.
Lazy river is, yeah, that's a good way to locate it, Carol.
So, um.
Play the length of two feet.
So obviously, in order to, uh, to get the approvals that are necessary for the conditions that have already been found to exist with respect to this property, that's why I'm not trying to dwell on it. Um, and it's, uh, it is by a half or, or a third worse in conditions than the two pools or accessory structures that have been proved for the houses today, that were on two roads. We happen to be on three roads. And, um, it, what you're really doing is, is facing an issue of semantics, because the township calls anything that's on a road a front yard, even though with three streets around it, everybody knows that you've got to have a rear of the house, you gotta have a front of the house, and that's why we're here. And we, uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer it, and if there's, is going to be any public comment, I assume most of it will be in favor. Um, I'd like to come back up afterwards and address those situations, but I'm happy to answer any questions, or we are, I should say. The architect is also here.
Any question, for the question board, I think we wanna hear the public comment. All right, thank you, Mr. Carson.
Thank you.
So I'll open the, uh, public comment. I'm, uh, assuming there's, uh, people here like to speak on this item tonight, so, uh, maybe the one closest, we can start, give your name and address.
Well, I'm walking up, by the way, I, I took the liberty of taking a picture from Mr. Samoa's front yard. That's the screening of thirty-nine-hundred Mystic Valley. Yep, totally screened, ever, evergreens.
So, so could you give us your name and address?
It's the Bowling, thirty-nine-fifty Mystic Valley Drive. I lived there with my husband, will be going on twenty years as members of this community. You know, it's really interesting, because last time that I was here, the very last thing that I said is, why are we repackaging the same thing again and again and again? This is a tactic to wear out neighbors. We only have so much strength. And the week after Fourth of July, is this when we get all the support from the neighbors that care? Mrs. Fu- Fukeye said she likes neighbors to agree. Yes, we do. Well, we've seen representation from a lot of neighbors here. We don't agree with these building plans. Now then, in fact, you know what's funny is I have kids, they're in the middle school, they're in the high school, and do you know what happens when they keep asking me and asking me for the same thing that I've already denied? They get nothing, because I find it's disrespectful, and they haven't listened to what I said the first time, or the second time, or the third, or fourth, or fifth, or sixth. And I resent being here again, by myself, a mother in this community. In fact, let's talk about the Bloomfield community. What's our slogan? One community, one Bloomfield. I've served as a Brownie leader, a Girl Scout leader, I am on my church council, I'm on the missions team. I am on the nonprofit arts school, the Link School of the Arts, that board. I have done everything that I can to pour into this community. In fact, I foolishly agreed for two thousand twenty-five to host the senior all-night party at our high school. So I'd, I'd love to know what Mr. Samoa is doing for our community. I know he's an affluent businessman. Selling marijuana paraphernalia and tobacco paraphernalia is lucrative. Nobody would deny this.
So I know this is important to you.
Wait, wait, wait.
Could you keep your comments to the request that's in front of it?
They are, but what we have to remember is, the community that you represent, Mr. Henry, that's us, not newcomers seeking to pour an obnoxious, monstrous amount of money into our community, to flagrantly wave it around, so that my zoning board of appeals will do whatever's necessary. Did anybody look and peruse the property? Could I please have these slides that I brought in today? Because what's interesting is, if you look at the, the files, I have one of them from Getsemane that was in, uh, Young's office, it's dated July something of two thousand twenty-one. For three years, we could've made different plans, we could've worked with our community, but we didn't, did we? We're here again. And you know, I have to say, I, I don't know the names of the army that's coming against our community, it's just moms and dads here. But one of them, the one that looked like Colonel Sanders over there said, ah, you know, there's offensive remarks. Well, what I find offensive is.
So could you, uh, direct your comments to the board and not make any comments about people in the audience?
What I, oh, I'm sorry. What I find, I'm sorry, Mr. Henry, what I find offensive is he said, well, you might be dealing with three houses with three pools. Well, you know what? I would hope that responsible builders, responsible art, architects, and a planning commission would have taken this under, or, three different plans, three different builders, three different architects wouldn't have flagrantly denied and, and misused every zoning ordinance they could, and it's, and tried to go for a ton of these variances. They would've gone before the fact, but why was, okay, wait. Here it is. Well, how do I get to the? How do I get to that, that piece? This is, uh, from your township.
Your pictures are here.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thanks, Andrea. Okay, so, and I need the laser pointer, please. It's in there. I open it? Oh, it's not in there. Did you hit something on this?
Look to the right of her book, against the side there.
There's the pointer.
Look there, oh. Uh, sorry. This is two thousand or so linear footage. This is my house. This huge thing that seems like an Alpine ski slope is the driveway. And what I'd like to first know is, with two thousand or so linear footage, whether it's front yard, backyard, side yard, up yard, down yard, why is this dumping into my house?
So all we're talking about tonight is the pool and the cabana.
I know.
So I'm gonna ask you again to direct your comments to those two items, please.
So, this is, well, this does have a point, sir. This driveway.
Please get to your point.
Yes. This is where they wanna put all of these accessory structures. If you look at your own.
Tonight, we're talking about the pool and the cabana.
Yes, the lazy river. There's lazy rivers with the moats and all this jazz over here. The rest of it is over here. If you look at your own plans from the assessor's office, this amount of space from this house to the road is sixty-nine plus seventy-five feet. That's a hundred and forty-five feet, not hundreds and hundreds of feet. A hundred and forty-five feet. We heard that there's a fifty-foot pool. That leaves ninety feet, oh, about as long as this, this room possibly. Again, putting all of this right here, whose front yards are these? What we're risking is Larry Smith wants to move out, Erica Holton already moved out, the Bowlingers, all of us have been here for decades. You are not seeking to represent the interest of your community. You are seeking the interest of the almighty dollar. Now then, let me go to the next one.
So I think we're gonna have other, uh, people that'd like to speak, so if you could wrap up in the next two minutes.
How much time did this gentleman get? Here is the presumptive plan that we've seen, the whole, every word's proposed, it's already enough, this is the, the sign outside of the house, they've already assumed you guys are gonna do it. They've assumed you'll do whatever they ask. So? So, like waving treats in front of the dog. Here is the entire property on Long Lake, probably at least an acre. If no one's brought it up again, this property is three properties. The house is on one of them, but God forbid we put that lazy river on one of the other two lots. In fact, I find it funny, I said, why don't we move the sports structure? And they said, oh, it would be too far to walk to the sports complex. Well, isn't it athletes and sports?
So we're talking about the pool and the cabana tonight.
Complex, we could put the-
So that's not in front of us tonight.
That's not on, that's not on the agenda.
About to limit your comments to what's before the board.
Okay. It's from Getsemane. This is listed, like I said, July twenty-sixth, twenty-one.
What does that date have to do with what we're discussing?
It has to do with the proper planning wasn't put in place. I also-
Listen to the instructions provided by our chairman.
Okay. And I'm, okay, the last thing I'm saying is right here, with all these accessory structures, right on the road. This is the high school right here. We're already showing them that, that the whole, you know, business of paraphernalia, marijuana, tobacco is lucrative. But when my kids-
So again, that's not relevant, you can't, you can't bring that up. Please refrain, I'm gonna have to cut you off if you make that comment again.
When we're looking at the parties at this lazy river, I have a business, and I have all of my employees over frequently. I want to know, with a hundred wild-billed tobacco paraphernalia shots-
So that, that again, please refrain from any reference to those sorts of speculative comments on the, the futures. The property, we're talking about the dimensions of the pool and the cabana.
I see this all from my front yard, guys. I'm a mom with kids that bike up and down here, parties with cabanas and huge-
So again, you're, again, that's a speculative comment. Just talk about the facts of the site and what's been pros and you need, you have a minute left.
Alright, one minute. I showed you one picture of a house that was not screened. I have pictures from my house. We can, I'll put, put them up. It is not screened, there are not evergreens, they will not be there. All of the activities of a Neverland complex will spill out onto the streets. And I will say, I would like to know when the last time you folks had training on this was. It's like, this is not-
Alright, this is so offensive, alright.
I'm sorry, but it's-
Do you even know who we are?
I do.
Do you understand that I am one of the most renowned land use attorneys in the state of Michigan? You want to talk to me whether I have sufficient training to know what I'm doing here? Okay, you are entirely out of line.
I'm very sorry, please accept my apology. I, on record, this was disseminated through our neighborhood with all the neighbors that do not agree. They had it on file, the last training for everyone was two thousand seventeen.
So that's really not helping your presentation?
I know, but what's helping is-
Wrap up in the next ten seconds.
Okay. All I'm saying is, this is gonna set a precedence. And the outcome of tonight, if we're going to allow this, then within thirty days of writing, whether it's legislative or administrative appeal, please know that the next appeal in our next meeting here will occur.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Thomas Camorro. I live on three eight two eight Mystic Valley Drive. Thank you, Mrs. Bowlinger, for your comments. Um I'm gonna share a different perspective from the neighbors. Um her perspective is actually the first time I've heard that perspective from any of the neighbors. Me, my next door neighbor, Mr. and Mrs. Jacobs, the ones next to us, I'm not sure their last names, Horst, um across the street, the Baharays, all of us are in favor. We have a little dog, Theo. We walk him up and down the street every single day, um multiple times a day. I can't see the house, I can see the roof of the house. Um I can't see the pool, the pool is invisible. Um the fact that they're putting up more trees is surprising to me, because I can't see anything as is. Truth be told, I think it's a great project. I think it's bringing value to the neighborhood. Um I don't know what family environment she's talking about in the neighborhood, I haven't seen anybody. Um to me, it seems like this is a personal attack, attacking elderly men's image, the way they look, the way his hair looks.
So just again, let's just talk about the pool and the cabana.
I apologize.
Yep. But the pool and the cabana is what we're trying to get feedback on and facts.
Absolutely. So it is about, uh I can't say exactly how high it is, but it is very high up a hill. So even without the evergreens, I think you would not be able to see the pool at all. Um like I said, we walk the dog every single day, we walk past their home. Um I have never seen them outside. But I, I'm not sure that anything will be visible. Um in terms of blocking the sound, I'm sure the trees are gonna help. Additionally, because we do hear telegraph, we do hear the PA from the school, we hear the football games. So if anything, all of this is just gonna help block the sound further. All of the neighbors, we, we're very close with our neighbors. We golf with our neighbors, we walk our dog with our neighbors. Um we have Simba and Chloe, we know the neighbor's dogs' names. Um we know all of our neighbors' names. I'm not sure that she's ever known my name, sorry about that.
So again, you're not talking about people in the audience, you're not talking about the applicant. We're talking about the request before us, which I'll say for the last time, is the pool and the cabana, so if you could wrap up as well.
Absolutely, yes. So I think the pool and the cabana is a great project. I think it's bringing value to the neighborhood. I don't see it being negative towards the neighborhood in any way. Um I think it's, in any, if anything, boosting the value of the neighborhood and increasing the family environment of the neighborhood. I'm gonna leave it at that. Thank you very much for your time. Good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak about the pool or the cabana? The location? And what's been presented?
I'm actually, my, my name's Mark Hagman, seventeen thirty-five Herring Ridge Drive. I'm actually here for a different agenda item, but I do just want to point out something. I just happen to be an expert in noise attenuation. I just don't want there to be any misconception that the trees will make an audible difference in the, the noise level. You need, according to the Federal Highway Association, the technical noise supplement, you need a fifty-foot wide buffer, dense trees to make an audible difference. That's all I want to say. I don't have a dog.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? I will close the public hearing and allow Mr. Carson to respond to the comments from the public about the pool and the cabana.
Well, uh we're here to get the approval for the pool and the cabana.
Thank you.
Two normal improvements throughout Bloomfield Township. I stand behind the distances as shown on the plan of hundreds of feet. I stand behind the screening that has been done. I point out that in connection with this proposal, the pool activity that was originally presented has been reduced by a third by square footage. And that uh we are hopeful that one day everybody will come to realize that this is not an intrusive, negative uh activity, that it's common throughout the township. We could have gone further along Long Lake to the entry of Kirkway and seen a house that dwarfs this house, that's, that you can see from the road. It's common. And I would hope that, given the fact that the definition of front yard is, is triggered by the roads, that these amenities are normal and they're appropriate for a four-and-a-half acre site. They accommodate the topography, and I would very much appreciate the granting of these permissions and variances. And I'm sorry that uh we may have caused some heat, but little light, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carson. So I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and the motion. Do we have any concerns about? I guess we have uh-
I'm gonna start, because I'm sure you can wrap it up.
Yeah.
You know, we can't prevent him from using his property, which I understand that. And I do see that obviously pools are common in other areas along with cabanas. The only question I would have would be the lazy river, yet with the size of the property. That's the only concern I have.
You know, I've been on the CBA probably at least twenty years, over twenty years. And I've watched as, as things have developed in the township. And we started out with, geez, I want to have a pool. And then it was a pool house, then it was a bigger pool house, then I need a sports court, then it was a bigger sports court. You know, and now, now I'm gonna put an outdoor living room, and I'm gonna have an outdoor kitchen, and now I want an outdoor fireplace. This is just how things have evolved. These are the things now that people moving into this community want to have in their yard. And we have a piece of property that's four point three acres, extremely large, and certainly has the space to accommodate these kinds of things. I'm sure that's why the property was purchased. So, does it, does it seem different to you? Yes. Is this what has been happening and what has been going on through the years as more and more has been constructed? This is the way, this is what people want now. This is what they want, to enjoy their property. And I personally don't have a problem with this.
I would like to say, I don't have a problem with the lazy river. Again, it's an extension of a pool, a water feature. We are a, you know, a natural um kind of a township, and it's flat on the ground. I mean, how much screening can you put up to screen something that is um flat on the ground? I think the pool house is certainly not out of scale with any of the things that um we are routinely approving on smaller lots than this. I think this is all about screening and um we can hold them to screen to the plan that they've presented today.
And I'll say this, the applicant, the two things that were significant, they reduced the request uh by roughly thirty percent, which was helpful. I, I will say that the lazy river was uh, you know, quite a bit of square footage, but for what everyone said, I agree. There's, there's quite a bit of acreage here. Uh there are um expand, we, we've seen, what is it, were they infinity pools? Uh we, we've seen any number of innovative water features. Uh spas now have a number of different configurations to them, so outdoor use of, of property is evolving and we're kind of evolving with it. So I think the applicant, the second thing they did is added quite a bit of screening. That's why I asked a number of questions about the size of the trees and whatever. So all of this is part of the motion, is gonna have to be screened from a public view. I, I know, you know, we're balancing a lot of factors here. We certainly heard a lot from the neighborhood regarding the scale of it. But if you look at our ordinance, if you look at the requirements, if you look at the placement and the screening that's in place, I think they've complied with it.
Yeah, and I would note that the correspondence that we received, there were, from what I could tell, an equal number of people in support and in opposition, so we-
Well, yes we know, project of the scale, draw comments.
Yeah. I'd like to say for the record, I've visited the site, and it is a unique property with a busy road on one side and two other frontages. And I for one went and looked.
Yeah, I mean, we've all been there. And I, and I will-
Through training.
I'm, yes, I actually did want to say that.
Many times.
I mean, even though we're, we'll get to the motion in a second, I do think it's important just for the integrity of this board, and as Bloomfield Township trustee, I find it insulting that there would be any implication that somebody's wealth would have any, any sort of bearing on a decision that we would make that's absolutely wrong, false, and frankly, I'm insulted. Um and beyond that, I was elected in two thousand twenty, I was appointed to this board in two thousand twenty, and since I've been on the board, we have received training. So I don't know what happened in two thousand seventeen, but I can tell you that every single person on here has received training, and we're all professionals, and I think we know what we're doing.
Um I just want to remind, you know, my fellow board members that, you know, this is America. And, you know, we hold homeownership and land ownership sacred in this country. And we believe that people have a right, within reason, within the law, to live in their homes and on their property as they choose to do so. We don't have a situation where the structure was built, and then after everything was built, we were approached and asked, hey, can we go ahead and do this? So we've all seen the, the representatives of this homeowner come and make presentations to us. They're very aware of what our regulations and our requirements are. They're asking for variances to see if they can get them. They're trying to work with the township to be reasonable and still allow this resident of our community to fulfill his dreams. Is this extravagant? Yes. But this is Bloomfield Township, this is Bloomfield Hills, folks. Okay, so if you want to see extravagance, most of it was invented here. So this is nothing new. So um this is just, as my colleague said, this is the way we're rolling right now. So uh the only thing I can say is, you know, we're going to make sure that, you know, the uh, the permission requests and the variances that are granted are adhered to. And uh I see us following the legal process, the processes that have been laid down by this township. And I appreciate that, and I just hope everybody understands that.
So as I reminded everybody, maybe we could vote now on the request for the pool and the cabana. These comments are important, but I, I think we ought to draw this to a close.
I'm prepared to make a motion. So with regard to the-
And thanks, everybody, for your thoughts. I realize this was, this was a long road to get here, so thank you.
Yes. So I'm gonna start with the permission request for the um pool cabana spa, pool pavilion, pool bridges, lazy river, gas fire pit, and fire bowls near the pool at three nine three zero Devon Gables Court. I'm gonna move that those be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant demonstrated compliance with section forty-two dash seven point six standards, because the um use of these accessory structures are appropriate and common. Um as we've heard, we see a lot of pools and cabanas in Bloomfield Township. I will also note that these, all of these accessory structures are within the setbacks and are going to be screened from public view, and so will not hinder or discourage the use of adjacent properties. For the dimensional variance for um these accessory structures that I previously named, uh I'm going to move that those variances be approved as submitted. The applicant demonstrated um that there is practical difficulty complying with the ordinance because the, the strict letter of the ordinance, excuse me, is unduly burdensome because of the fact that this home is located on multiple frontages and does not in essence have a backyard. Uh there is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that all these accessory structures are going to be screened and again, are within the um, the setbacks as far as the amount of space between properties is concerned. The unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, again, given the multiple frontages on these uh multiple acres, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated. I will add uh that all permits should be made within one year and obtained prior to construction. And as we've discussed, ad nauseam at this point, all of these accessory structures will have to be screened twelve months out of the year with evergreens. And those plantings should meet or exceed the height of the accessory structures at the time of planting.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The request is granted. Calling item seventeen one seven two nine, Herring Ridge.
Uh Anthony, Sapphire Luxury Homes. I just want to say uh hello to everyone, and uh I really respect you, you guys. You're um, I think you're professional, and this is actually one of my favorite boards, and I've mentioned this to Andrea, so on a on a side note.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can approve this and get on. Got it. Thanks, thanks. Um seventeen twenty-nine, Herring Ridge, um we are asking for variance uh to build into the natural feature setback um and fourteen-foot-high retaining walls due to the topography of this uh piece of land. I'll just go over some, some critical points here. Um the front yard setback per Bloomfield is forty feet. The HOA is sixty, and they- The HOA is 60 and they would not budge from that. The rear yard setback is, um, 65 feet per the platted original Heron Bay, um, uh, bylaws. And, um, but Bloomfield is 87 with the average, uh, setback for the sight line. So, um, it's a very challenging property. And there's a 32-foot drop from the top of the road to the water's edge. And without having or requesting these variances, it would be extremely difficult to build on this property. The, where it's outlined in red, if we were to follow every single, um, required setback, that would be the building envelope, which the house even sits outside that building envelope. And this was the original water's edge. We, we had it surveyed again and it moved 30 feet towards the house. So, and HOA is pushing us towards that water's edge and hence the natural feature setback and everything else involved. So, again, it's very challenging and if you can see in the pictures that I, I provided, I, I put a little commentary on all those pictures, so you know, you don't have to hear me explain it. Yep. So, one more. Again. So right there is the neighbor. I believe this gentleman right here is 1735, yeah, actually, when he came up.
One more. And in the note, there's a drop in grade on this property?
Uh, yes, yes, 32 feet from the, from the road to the lake edge.
Okay.
I mean, it's, these pictures don't do it justice when you get out there.
You can't tell, you can't see that from the picture.
You can't see it. It's, 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 it's actually dangerous walking down there. So, it's severe. Um, I have, um, pictures that I submitted, um, there was additional pictures that was on. It shows, um, uh, this gentleman's property. His retaining wall is, uh, based on these calculations on the site plans, about 15 feet. Yeah. Um, and, um, if I show you on the site plan, you guys will see that, um, where he steps out of his patio, he's at, um, sorry, I need my readers. He's at ni- elevation of 932 and the highest point of the wall, our wall, would be 929. So there would be no visual obstruction. If we were to sit out his walkout, if you look in out and he would not see the, the highest point of our wall. And I could be, that would be depicted on the site plan. If I pull up the site plan, you'll see it. Do you have the actual site?
I have that.
That's the only thing you have? Yeah.
So why would you want to even build there?
Okay, this will be good enough. So this is, this is the house, this is the wall, the retaining wall. This is his gentleman's walkout patio right here. That's 932 and the highest point of this wall is at 929, uh, 929, I believe, the highest point, right here. So, and I have pictures of actually his, his thing, but they were not, uh, possibly uploaded. But you could see the severe elevation, uh, to the neighbor immediately to the west. So, I don't know if you're here in, uh, in favor or opposition, but-
We'll soon find out.
Yes, we will.
We won't keep you in suspension. So you're going 25 feet into the natural feature setback?
Uh, I don't think it's 25 feet.
That's what it says.
That's what it says. So that's what I'm saying, there's no setback.
There's no setback.
Which I don't think has ever happened. Stephanie's not going to like that.
So right here, so.
I'm a little concerned by this.
Very concerned.
But here, here's where the water's edge was before. Now it's receded 30 feet. Now we want to take that whole natural features area and build in it. What happens when that water recedes another 30 feet and your pool's now in the water?
No, this is the water, this is the new water's edge, this-
Right.
Light blue area.
But you're telling me that the water's edge used to be down below, correct?
Correct. Now, in the, in the 60s. So it could recede, it could recede, it could go back to the original, who knows? I mean, it's, I, I, I don't think, I mean, but if, if that was, if that were the case, it would be the case for everybody in the subdivision. So, and there's a lot of people that are in this situation.
I don't think we've approved anybody to take up all of the natural features.
That's correct.
So what would, so-
I knew you were doing landscaping in there, weren't you? How'd you do the grading? That's an encroachment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you have to consider the grading, it's also going to occur within NFS to make this happen.
I'm sorry.
So it's not just the corner of the patio that's encroaching, there's also the encroachment of the work and disturbances while they do the construction. So if you've got a pool that pretty much the edge of it encroaches, once you go in there to do the work and do the disturbances, it will essentially be within the NFS.
Which we've built in NFS before.
Yeah, but you likely shouldn't have.
So what would be the solution if you go back to that, that picture?
No, he's trying to see how much he can do. No, there's nothing.
I'm asking, is the house-
No, it's just a blank, it's just a blank canvas.
What's the question?
He would never come in and build stuff.
Well, so my question actually gets back to the association. You're saying the HOA is pushing you back. So I'm thinking, are we talking about a pool and the house is already there or not?
No.
But even the house location meets the ordinances, but it's what's pushing the pool into the natural features.
The HOA actually approved, we sent it and you have the actual document from the HOA and they were extremely difficult to deal with. Um, finally, after months, they approved it. However, at the 60-foot front yard setback.
Well, that's part of the problem is there-
That's part of the problem. HOA is wagging its tail.
They're pushing you back farther.
On our-
And they want to push you up.
Yeah, we want to push you up.
I would love that.
So, tell the HOA to stand down.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
I mean, what would, what would the concession here be, this retaining wall? I mean, for them to, for this, for this homeowner even have usable space. Without this, some type of way to retain it, this wall, the, the elevate the backyard, they would have no usable backyard.
You don't think they're farther out?
I mean.
Let's do public comment.
Okay.
Yeah, we're struggling.
Any other questions? I think we got the picture, let's hope it is the public and Mark. Yeah, it's-
Hi, uh, Mark Hagman, 1735 Heron Ridge Drive. I was a member of the Homeowners Association Board in the past. Um, I agree, this is a very challenging lot and it's part of the reason why it's one of the last lots within the development that someone plans on building on. I guess the first thing that I'm surprised by is that I, I just got the notice about this property potentially being developed right before 4th of July, that there's a board meeting with setbacks and everything else. You know, looking at, this is the only plan that I've seen. There's been zero outreach from the owner or developer. I haven't, I haven't spoken to anybody about this. And I'm looking at this and there, how can you even discuss retaining walls when you don't even have elevations on this? But that's, this is what was provided to the public. That's the only thing on the website that I was able to look at. That's kind of, kind of difficult. So, if you look at the, where the building footprint is and you look at the proposed retaining wall on the westerly side, everything up to the building footprint edge is roughly flat between our two properties. So I'm trying to understand, is he building up? Is he digging down? What's, I, I don't even understand why there, there would be a proposed retaining wall and a, a, a variance requested. You know, when I look at this, it says that he's requesting a variance, proposed retaining walls exceeding two feet within eight feet of the lot lines on the western side yard. That's the minimum? Uh, what's the maximum? 100 feet? It says, it doesn't even say anything about the easterly side requesting a variance, but I certainly see that there's a retaining wall over there. I get that he wants to put a 15-foot retaining wall, I think he mentioned 14, but I, I, I get the reason why. You know, we have a giant retaining wall as well and I'm just surprised that the developer or owner hasn't reached out to us to discuss, well, how would you get those retaining walls to have any synergy as well? It seems like kind of an important thing, if, if you could pull up my property. I'd really appreciate it. So that one, uh, with the ugly trampoline that my kids have forced me to put in. Can you go, sorry, one more back with the photo? That one. So, I mean, you can see the retaining wall and that's only the first level of the retaining wall that you see. There's actually the second one above that and that's where our pool sits. You know, if, if you were to grant variances, I would hope that there would be some sort of situation where those walls would all kind of come together so that there would be more strength there. That'd be number one that I would, I would propose. Um, and then if you go back to the, the plat map. Thank you. So, there's one more lot that hasn't been developed and that's 1723. So, part of the, with the natural setback that you have in there, the 87 feet, that puts our homes roughly even and then you'd be able to build out a little bit with a pool. My worry is if, if you do encroach upon that to 57 feet, now you've ruined a portion of our, our privacy. We can always put trees up, that's fine, but then that ruins his view of the lake, which I wouldn't want to do either. But if you move them up, then what happens when 1723 comes in? Well, they're wanting, they're going to want a view of the lake as well, so they're going to come in and say, well, not 57 feet, but like 25 feet. I don't know where it would end. So, um, those are my thoughts. You know, I would, I would really like to review the site plans, I'm sure I'd have some additional comments, but I recognize it's a challenging lot. I, I support the development of that lot. I just would appreciate if it would be done in a smart way. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? So, close the public hearing, let the applicant respond to the public comments.
Thanks for your comments. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm more than happy to provide those site plans to him, I don't know what happened. It's a challenging lot. It's a very challenging, I mean, there's really no other way to say it. We'd just like to build a house on this lot for these clients.
I mean, it may be that you can build a house, but not a pool.
So what would the concession be? Would we, can we shrink back away from the NFS? If we push it? No?
I mean.
Like, uh-
Yeah, the pool really pushes everything.
So, here's the house, obviously, the edge of the house. So, would it, would we be able to take this triangular shape right here and just come across it this way? And that way, this is not obstructing, wasn't obstructing really, but it will pull this back and they won't have, have very minimal backyard.
Yeah, I think, you know, if-
Sure, go ahead.
I think, you know, if, if they want a pool-
You have a lot of words allotted to you that you haven't used tonight, so let's speed up. Go right ahead.
If, if they really want to have a pool, if that's really the priority, then they're going to have to size the house and change the location of the house accordingly. I mean, there's really nothing you can do with this lot, I mean-
There's limitations to that, though. Even through the HOA, certain square footage requirement and just different things that they-
Well, once again, the HOA is the HOA, but nobody does anything unless the township approves it. So, I mean, if somebody wants to build on this lot, I'm sure we can work with that homeowner to come up with a solution. And the homeowner association might have to get with the program because this poor unfortunate person has this lot that's almost impossible to build on. So, they're going to have to provide him some grace or her grace.
And then, and just so you guys know, there are lots, the majority, the great majority of the subdivision only has a 40-foot setback. There's a few lots that are required.
We, we looked at the architect, that doesn't make, I've never seen it.
This lot and it's one of the shallowest.
That's your problem.
Yeah. And 4717-
We've tried. We've argued that.
Way closer to the street.
They said it was originally platted that way and that's what it is and that's how it's going to be. And it was numerous emails back and forth and the correspondence was difficult and it's just like, come on, just let us, 40-foot setback. Let us work with something here. How are we going to go to Bloomfield Township and ask them, hey, Liz? Anyways, that's where I'm at.
That's the place for relief, not us.
Yeah, I'm afraid.
So, do we get, do we-
We could table it and you could come back, see if the HOA will work with you, maybe talk with the neighbor, see if you can make a plan with him. And then, and tell the HOA, you know, I'm having a hard time.
Township's not buying what they're selling.
Yeah. On the lake.
On the natural features.
Right.
I'm actually surprised that they would want that.
I think there's, I think there's some inner workings where they, they, they-
Well, you have someone who used to be on that HOA, so maybe he can be an ally.
So we would table this for the following?
I, I'm not, I don't want to see it too. It sounds like there needs to be a discussion and revisions and we have notice and requirements for August, so I would think that likely wouldn't be- At the earliest practicable, you know, meeting.
Or if the board wants to, clearly you're not looking to take any action on this plan. You could proceed in a very similar fashion as you had before, is you could, um, uh, make a motion to deny without prejudice that allows them to reapply at another time. That way you're not limiting his, the timeframe, we have to notice, it's not going to be the same plan. Um, and that way then there's no constraints on any of these upcoming agendas. Can I say, are there, um, floor plans and elevations of this house in existence?
Um, there, yes and no, they have, um, renderings, but those, uh, the materials being used are being approved by the HOA.
I think, you know, plans of the house would be helpful, elevations of the house, cross-section of the site, so we understand in concept terms just how far it is.
Sure, sure.
Um, would help if you're coming back and then maybe a little, maybe it's too early to talk to the neighbor.
Yeah, I think that the, the major point here was asking for that, uh, variance because even with all those conceptual drawings and if we can't get this, those are, those are moot point.
We're being put in a round room and being told to sit in the corner. I mean, it's just, there's no way out of this thing.
Yeah, but I mean, but we're also under a time constraint, just so you know. So I don't know how soon we, I would love to, I mean, for us, we can revise this quickly and I can have discussions with the neighbors, I can press the HOA. But there's time constraints with these clients that, I mean, going two months out is just, it would be-
Right, you gotta get started.
I got, we can, there's just not, I mean, I just can't table it that long.
I think what you're hearing now-
We can't approve it tonight.
He's not losing it.
Yeah, I think what you're hearing from us is we, we wouldn't approve this tonight, okay? So, do you have to go back to the drawing board and lose the pool or redesign everything?
Okay.
Or, or go to the homeowners association, let them put you back to the 40 feet?
Okay.
And then you don't have this issue.
So your biggest objection isn't the NFS?
It is the NFS.
That is, that's-
We've never granted a variance that eliminates it completely. Okay. And then it's the work that you're going to do that's also going to disrupt it. So you got two significant factors against you.
Yeah, we were, yeah.
And it just, it just looks really tight. It looks hard to-
Like I say, I can't tell what's happening in your floor plans, but you sort of have a tab of a thing sticking out that's pushing the pool out. Like, are there other configurations?
Back to Lanai, walkout Lanai.
Well, maybe you can't have everything.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
That's the thing. We're going to have to do some.
I can see a hardship based on what you presented.
Okay.
Unless you move it so she can't go through the road.
But it sounds like it's so they're proposing denying it, but if we table it, what kind of time constraint does that put on him?
You're still sixty days out.
Okay, at least, even with tabling it.
The advantage of denying is he just starts from.
He just resubmits.
Resubmits.
And it's a clean proposal and a new proposal.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion?
Yeah, and you might send a message.
Yeah.
By having a denial, because then obviously, these comments are going to be part of the record, and he can take it back to the HOA. That might give some leverage to maybe some further negotiation.
Okay, well, I make a motion to deny this request without prejudice.
Support.
Motion to support a discussion. All's in favor say aye.
You need to have a motion that's a little bit more definitive.
Okay, sorry. What question? All right, so with regards. Hmm? Okay, the dimensional, so with regard to the appeal at seventeen twenty-nine Heron Ridge Drive for the required dimensional variance for all the accessory structures that have been listed, I make a motion that we deny without prejudice. Is that?
Based on the standards.
Oh, I'm so sorry. My brain. Based on the information, let's.
Did not demonstrate.
Oh, my God, hang on, help me out. Based on the information presented, the applicant did not demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would not be unduly burdensome due to the, you know, the topography of the lot. There would be injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the orientation of the home on the lot. No unique circumstances with the property have been given, and it is self-created due to the fact that the size of the lot, and again, the configuration of the property. So if if denied, there is no verbiage, but.
That's it.
Well, I just add, I would say the location of the pool and the lanai is also sort of self-created. It's possibly a self-created problem.
I would say it's also created by the homeowners association.
Because I he needs the minutes to go back to them to say that, so I put those three things in.
I don't think they're going to budge. That's the issue.
Well.
I'm seeing maybe there's legal recourse. I'm not sure.
Right, unfortunately, I think there probably is. It sounds like no rationale. This lot differently than the other ones for that setback.
That's not going to help.
So we have a motion.
All right, so we have a motion. Was there support? Support, okay. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, your request is denied without prejudice.
Thanks, guys.
Prayers for our brother here. That's just it's a take it. It's a take it, yeah.
Hello.
Correct, correct. I'd say it's a take it. Regulatory take it.
It's just me.
Okay.
Michael Rizicky, owner of Green Lantern Pizza Bloomfield at four two eight two five Woodward Avenue, the Woodward Corners Plaza. We're here for a variance for our sign. It's the last piece of the pie. It actually opened.
Ah.
It actually opened tomorrow, so.
We like that this late in the night. Yeah.
I was not with.
The person sitting next to me.
You've seen how the sausage is made, and you've done a good job.
Okay, so your logo exceeds five percent.
Exactly, that's our brand standards and logo, and with this is the fourteenth location for Green Lantern Pizza.
Any questions on the board? Opens up to the public. Any guys out there want to comment? Close the public hearing, bring it back for.
I'll make a motion. So with regard to the dimensional variance at four two eight two five Woodward Avenue for the proposed wall sign logo exceeding five percent of the sign area, I'm going to move that that be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the fact that this is a franchise, and this is a franchise logo, and that's what the size of the logo is. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that this is commercial property in a commercial area on a busy Woodward Street, and these signs are common in those commercial properties. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given its location on Woodward Avenue, and that being a busy thoroughfare that does require signage for people to know what is in the plazas. This is not self-created due to the reasons stated, and I will just add that you should get your permits within one year and obtain them prior to installation of the sign.
So I have motion and support. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Have a good night. Come see us.
So so we have one more. One more.
Yeah, we have one more.
No, we got one more. Calling item nineteen.
I'm adjourning.
Twenty twenty-three.
Come back next time.
Yeah, you're here all night.
He suffered through this.
We are ready.
Get a Purple Heart.
And then he's going to ask if you have the proper tree.
No, I'm pretty mellow. So we're asking for this variance to add a second sign to this building at twenty-three hundred Telegraph Road. We had a variance, actually, I think it was in twenty twenty-one, was granted for this sign. I believe it was a slightly different shape, I think, than it had square sides, the square corners, where this one's a capsule shape, and might have been a little deeper. I'm not sure. But that's essentially what we're asking for, is we don't feel that that sign is overly obtrusive. There's a lot of fascia there, and it's got nothing on it, you know? And so it's not like it's a cluttered frontage. It's facing Telegraph Road. Hawthorne is a separate brand from ABC Warehouse. It's not the kind of thing that you would know if you just saw ABC Warehouse, oh, they must have Hawthorne appliances there. It's a separate store, and there this is the only ABC warehouse that sells Hawthorne through it. So we feel like the sign is useful and necessary, and that would be undue burden on the owner without it.
So this is is this the Hawthorne that used to be way down Woodward, moved in here?
Yes.
Sure.
That's what I thought when I read it, so.
That's what I I saw that it was, and I went, oh, where was it?
Yeah, that's a good story. So now that's part of ABC Warehouse, just at this location?
Well, ABC is only selling Hawthorne or Hawthorne is only being sold through ABC Warehouse at this location. I believe ABC's own Hawthorne. Are there?
Four ABCs.
Oh, are there? Okay, I thought this was the first.
One locally.
Ah, that's what it was. I think that's what it was, yeah, because I know there's a couple other Hawthorne stores in the area.
But the need for it is that name has a, you know, brand recognition, and you want to you want to draw attention to it. Okay. So I'll open this up to the public for any comment. Close the public hearing, bring it back for.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
In regard to the appeal at twenty-three hundred Telegraph Road for a signage, a secondary signage appeal, I move the motion be or the proposal be approved as requested and submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards of practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the two-part nature of their business and needing a second, smaller sub-brand advertised again on a busy street. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors due to the relatively small amount of signage on that elevation, and it's not self-created.
So I have motion and support. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.